Ms. Lesny?
Here.
Mr. Bustle?
Here.
Ms. Defoe?
Here.
Mr. Weigum?
Present.
Mr. Rogers?
Here.
Madam Chair, you have a quorum to conduct business.
Thank you. Are there any communications?
We just have one request from Mr. Gardella, who's caught up in another board meeting at this time. He asked that ZBA case 1835 be moved to the end of the agenda if okay with the Board.
Okay. We will deal with that when we get to the case. Appreciate that. So, at this point, we'll start the public hearing. For those of you who haven't joined us before, let me give you just a brief summary of how we conduct business. We'll call each case by the case number. We'll ask the appellant to step forward to the podium. The city will read a brief synopsis of the case. We ask you, as the appellant, to then, I think there's a sign-in sheet, sign in at the podium, your name, I think, and maybe address. And then, as you kind of open your remarks to us, give us your name and address verbally, and explain to us what you're asking for and why you're asking for it. The city will then read the findings of fact. We'll ask you to agree or disagree. Add any additional information at that time. We'll open it up to public comment. Anyone here for that case can speak at that point. And then, we'll turn it over to the Board, and the Board will deliberate and make a decision. We do ask you, as the appellant, to stay in the front row in case we have any additional questions for you. Okay? So, with that, will the city call the first case, please?
For ZBA case 1834, which is a tabled case, the appellant Rajiv Jali of MRI LLC, representing the owner Kate Gupta Real Estate Associates LLC, is requesting the following waiver from the Board for temporary use approval to place and use a mobile MRI unit at the site for a period of one year. Second request. The property is located at the southeast corner of Southfield Road in Mount Vernon Street at 23832 Southfield Road, Sidwell Parcel 2425 301 029, Zoned OS Office Service. This appeals to Section 5.198, Article 23, Chapter 45 of the Southfield City Code, more commonly known as the zoning ordinance.
Thank you. Is the appellant here?
You need to bring it from the table.
Oh, sorry. Can I have a motion to?
I'd like to make a motion to bring case number 18-34 from the table to the floor.
Do I have a second?
Yes.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Hi, good evening.
Good evening. My name is George Contis. I'm the attorney for Rajiv Jali of Maxim MRI. I'm with the law firm at G. Marco Mullins &amp; Horton, 101 West Big Beaver, Suite 1000, Troy, Michigan, 48084. I had email communication with Mr. Jali on his way in. He was stuck in traffic. I anticipated he would be here at this moment, but in the meantime, I think I can still proceed with hopes that while I'm still presenting, he walks in and can supplement any additional information.
I'm sorry. I know you said your name, but I didn't hear it clearly.
George Contis. C-O-N-T-I-S.
Thank you. All right, thank you. Can you give a brief summary of what you're asking for?
Absolutely. Petitioner is requesting a continuation of the temporary use approval. We originally requested it for a period of up to one year. We don't need a year. We'd be willing to accept serial 60-day extensions. That's how desperate the situation has become. Some of it self-imposed by the petitioner with respect to its failure to meet certain requirements for purposes of meeting the site plan milestones, which were originally granted back in March of 2017. However, since October of 2018, the petitioner has been unable to use the mobile MRI unit, which comes to its facility only once a week on Thursdays, to see patients at the medical office building where the mobile MRI unit is located. Maxim MRI is still paying rent at the rate of $15,000 a month and has no income from this location to support it. More importantly, the patients of the medical office building that this services at this facility are unable to use the mobile MRI unit for scans, and these are first-party benefit under auto negligence cases and workers' compensation. If Mr. Jali was here, and when he gets here, he will tell you, there are very few mobile units that provide services to these type of patients, so we consider it to be very essential and necessary. And we beg the Board's indulgence to permit us to continue to operate upon the following conditions. Plans are in the process of being compiled, architects' plans, for a permanent enclosure at the facility. We anticipate that all plans and necessary meetings would be achieved within the next 60 days with the city's building officials and building department. Thereafter, hopefully, once everything is approved, construction can begin. But until that time, absent an approval or a temporary approval to move forward, rent continues to accrue without income to offset the rental payment, and patients are denied the ability to use the mobile MRI facility at the location. So, for these reasons, we request a 60-day serial approval, and we'd have to come back and make a request in 30 days. So, we get on the agenda 60 days from now to make sure that everything is continued to comply should the Board decide that that would be appropriate to proceed. But we're not looking for anything extraordinary. We just need the opportunity to get the external structure approved and built so that we don't have to come here after once everything is completed and we have a complete enclosure. That's the extent of my comments.
Okay, thank you. Will the city read the findings of fact, please?
For ZBA case 1835, the appellant Rajiv Jali of MRI LLC, representing the owner Kate Gupta Real Estate Associates LLC, is requesting the following from the Board for temporary use approval to place and use a mobile MRI unit at the site for a period of one year, which is second request. Property is located at the southeast corner of Southfield Road in Mount Vernon Street at 23832 Southfield Road, Sidwell Parcel 2425 301 029, Zoned OS Office Service. Subject property is developed with the Southfield Urgent Care. The property to the north across Mount Vernon Street is Zoned OS Office Service and ERO, Education Research Office, and is developed with the Love &amp; Care Animal Hospital. The property to the south is Zoned OS Office Service and is developed with the International Gospel Deliverance Center. The property to the east is Zoned R3 Single Family Residential and is developed with the Single Family Home fronting Mountains Vernon Street. And the property to the west across Southfield Road is Zoned OS Office Service and P Vehicular Parking and is developed with the Pace Academy Charter School. The site contains 1.19 acres of land with 199 feet of frontage on Southfield Road and a depth of 260 feet on Mount Vernon Street. The administrative site plan approved March 31, 2017, indicates the placement of a mobile MRI unit on the east side or rear of the existing urgent care center with associated concrete pad and wood fence with gate leading from the tenant space to the mobile MRI unit, along with a pedestrian connection. A landscape plan indicating required screening along Mount Vernon Street was approved on March 2, 2017. The zoning Board of Appeals granted temporary use approval in ZBA case 17-03 on March 7, 2017. Conditions of approval stated that the appellant must reappear before this Board if they wish to extend the temporary use permit after one year from the date that the certificate of occupancy is issued, and all relevant building permits and a certificate of occupancy must be obtained prior to operation of the mobile MRI unit. As of today's date, the required fencing, pedestrian connection, and landscaping required as part of PASP 16-0043 has not been completed. Building permit, PB 18-0116 for building alterations relating to the MRI was issued on March 13, 2018, but expired on September 9, 2018. No inspections were scheduled to finalize this building permit. A certificate of occupancy cannot be issued until the site improvements listed above are completed and the building permit is finalized out. The building department observed the MRI in use on November 1, 2018, and then, the mobile MRI unit measures eight and a half feet wide by 48 feet in length, 13 feet 6 inches high with a painted metal exterior.
Okay, thank you. Do you agree with those facts?
Yes, with one caveat that it's not necessary for a one-year extension. As I said, we'd be amenable to rolling 60-day approval until a final enclosure was approved and then construction began.
Okay. Is there anything else you'd like to add at this time?
Oh, Mr. Jali, if I could, if you could advise the Board, what type of patients are seen at this? I made a statement. I want to make sure I'm correct. I indicated that there are, the type of medical patients seen at this mobile MRI facility are those with first-party benefits and auto negligence cases and workers' compensation.
That's correct.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Anything else you'd like to add?
No.
Okay. We will ask for the city recommendation?
City's recommendation is that the proposed temporary use permit be denied based upon the following findings. The appellant has not complied with the conditions of PASP 16-0043 or ZBA case 17-03. However, the mobile MRI has been in use at the property.
Okay, thank you. We will open public comment. Is there anybody from the public who wishes to speak on this case? Please step forward. State your name and address for the record, please.
Good evening. My name is Gerard Mullin, PO Box 155, Southfield, Michigan, 48037. I was here March 2017, and I was against it then. I'm against it now. We don't need a business-type trailer park in Southfield. You think in the city of Troy, they would have something like this? I doubt it. And I've been to many seminars in the county, and they always point to Troy as the ideal city in Oakland County. I don't think Troy would have this, and I don't think we should have it. We should compete and be, try to be as good as Troy. And that's about it. And, of course, they have not been complying. Obviously, they were operating outside. If you're operating in November 2018, you broke the rules. And when you come before a body like this, I think you should come before clean hands. And obviously, they just tried to get away with something, and they failed. And therefore, they should be denied. Thank you.
Thank you.
Pamela Gerald, PO Box 155, Southfield, Michigan, 48037-0155. I concur with my husband. I'm going to use a different city. I don't think Rochester Hills, West Bloomfield, Bloomfield Hills would have such a device out like that in the open. As he said, you came here to the city of Southfield. You did not do what was required, and when you go against the rules and the requirement, you should not be rewarded with any kind of extension. Now, if you guys approve that, because I have a house in that exact area, and that's basically in my backyard, if you approve that, I'm going to put me a she shed in the back of my yard the same size as that trailer, and I'm not going to come and get any approvals. I'm just going to put it up. Now, what sense would that make? It would be disrespectful to the city, disrespectful to the residents, and I don't operate like that. I do things within the ordinance that's required by the time it's required, based on the specs that are required. If you approve this, you're going to set a very low standard. You're going to send a message that says you don't have to comply, but you wait a year, we'll forget about it, and you come back and you ask for something different. And to hear his representative say, "We will forego the year extension and just do it for 60 days", they're not doing the city a favor. They're doing the city a disservice. And the manner in which he's doing business is very disingenuous. So, I'm going to concur with our planner, Ms. Sarah Malali, my husband, to say, "Do not approve this, because if you do, look out for my she shed."
Thank you. Is there anyone else who wishes to speak on this case? Not, we will close public comment and open it up to the Board. Ms. Lesny?
Okay. First of all, all the hardships that were mentioned are self-created, so they don't apply to this case at all. Self-created hardships are not hardships. I can't see how even these drawings, how they meet the standards that the city requires for mobile MRI units. There are several in the city, and they have met all the requirements, and you probably don't even notice them because they're hidden. It's been a year, okay, 11 months, and you haven't been able to, you haven't tried to meet the requirements.
Twenty-three months.
Twenty-three. Oh, you're right. And this, the drawing here with a roller, a window shade, basically, I see no way for, if I were a patient, they had to get up into this unit, I would be aghast. This is just not a proper way of dealing with it. You're trying to cut every possible expense corner that can be done, and I am not in favor of extending a waiver.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Bustle?
I just wanted to get a couple of clarifications if I could. Sir, you said there was a $15,000 rental that was month, month, month for this center? So, for the last 23 months, you've been paying the $15,000 without the use of a MRI?
It's only been since after the facility was tagged, and then, they inadvertently began operating the following Thursday, and when they contacted me, I advised them to no longer operate because they shouldn't be operating because it had been tagged. But from March of 2017 until October of 2018, it was generating income, and rent was being paid. And because the contract still exists, rent is still due.
That's the answer to my question.
Yes.
Other clarification wanted is, there was a change of ownership on this property? When did that take place?
There was a change of ownership relative to the operation of the MRI. It was originally Metro MRI, and it became Maxim MRI.
When was that?
I think it was probably 2017.
What month?
I think it was March or April.
So, very soon after, so very soon after the variance was granted?
Yeah. There was a miscommunication with the transfer. We thought it was two years, and we actually approached the city saying we were ready to do the, you know, the rest of the work. So, there was a miscommunication.
Why didn't you? It says here in point number five, "As of November 15, 2018, acquired fencing, pedestrian connection, and landscaping has not been completed." From my observation, it was never started?
No, it wasn't started.
Why wasn't it started?
We were then, under the impression it was two years and not one.
No. Why wasn't it started when the variance was granted?
Because after talking to Ms. Malali, she said, you know, they required an enclosure now, so the rules have changed.
Well, there was never even the fence that was originally requested, so why wasn't that started?
Because then, we would have had to make an enclosure anyway, so we've been working on making the enclosure.
Ms. Malali, is that a correct assessment of how things transpired?
If I might, through the chair to Mr. Bustle, the conditions of approval were that everything was constructed per the site plan. We didn't have discussions regarding providing a more permanent enclosure until after they were cited, so...
So, that was over a year and a half after the variance was originally requested?
Correct.
So, my question still stands. Why wasn't the plans that were originally approved implemented at the, well, really, they should have been implemented time of your transfer, which was shortly after the variance was granted?
We thought we had two years.
You had two?
We thought we had two years.
I don't care if you had two years. You were supposed to implement those before you used the MRI. That was the agreement, that the changes were to be implemented so that you could use the mobile MRI unit, not that you would be able to implement the accommodations at your leisure.
We thought it was implementation over the period of two years.
Okay. I think we're not communicating here, so I'm gonna...
Mr. Bustle, if I may, I'm looking at the approval, PASP 16-0043, the general conditions of approval. This approval is valid for a period of one year from the date of approval, unless an extension is requested by the petitioner and granted by the city planner and city council. That was dated, this was marked as received by the city's planning department on March 30, 2017, and signed on March 31, 2017. Now, Mr. Jali indicated, at the time, on March 31, 2017, it was not Maxim. Subsequent to Maxim becoming the responsible party for the operation of the MRI, he was under the mistaken assumption that it was a two-year period and that they had two years within which to meet all these benchmarks relative to the fencing and the screening and the pedestrian.
Two years to implement accommodations for a temporary enclosure, for temporary usage? Doesn't that seem a little, I mean, that doesn't seem to make sense, does it? That you're going to take two years to implement something that's supposed to be done for temporary use?
Respectfully, that was his, he can speak for himself. That was his understanding.
Well, I guess caveat emptor. I'm all done.
Okay. Mr. Weigum?
Well, I guess my first question is, I don't understand why you're here. You have done literally nothing. I've been out there, and you have a pad. That's all you have. And now, you're asking us to approve, even though you haven't done anything. So, I'm asking you right now, what do you expect us to do?
Like I said, I thought we had two years to implement the plan.
Two years, but you can't use it until these plans are implemented.
I wasn't under that impression.
I go along with the city.
Okay. Jason?
Yeah, it's hard for me to disagree with anybody's comments. You know, I feel, from the business perspective, I feel like, yeah, I'm concerned about the patients who would like to have MRIs done, but at the same time, you know, the building department, the planning department gave, you know, conditional approvals, and whether it was one-year, two-year, mistaken identity, there's been no, there's been no initiation of the process other than, you know, kicking the can down the road until we, until they're told that they have to do it. So, in that regard, I, you know, I wouldn't want to extend them again because of that. So, that's where I'm basically holding.
Okay, thank you. I, again, agree with my colleagues and agree with the city. I think we have extended, just so you're aware, we have extended a second year to MRI units that have complied with all the conditions we've placed on them. So, this is not anything against MRI units, or, you know, the city allows for a one-year use, temporary use, and an extension of that one-year use, which we've granted when it's been explicitly complied with. So, I think unfortunately, this isn't going to be granted tonight, but let's, Mr. Weigum, will you make a motion, please?
Sure. In regard to case, ZBA case 18-34, the appellant Rajiv Jali of MRI LLC, representing the owner Kate Gupta Real Estate Associate, requesting the following waiver from the Board for temporary use approval to place and use a mobile MRI unit at the site for a period of one year. Second request this is...
Give the address of the person.
What?
The address of the person.
Sorry about that. Did it, give it? Ah, sorry. The property is located at the southeast corner of Southfield Road in Mount Vernon Street at 23832 Southfield Road. I move that we do not grant this use permit and it be denied based upon the following, that the appellant has not complied with the conditions of PASP 16-0043 or ZBA case number 17-03, even though the MRI unit has been in use at the property.
Okay. Do I have a second?
I'll second it.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you. Have a good night. There was a request to postpone case 1835 till the end of the agenda, so, do I need a motion to do that, just to move it?
Yes, move it.
No.
You don't need a motion.
Okay. We're moving it to the end. Will the city call the next case, 1810, please?
For ZBA case 1810, the appellant Haytham Hanawa Builder, representing the owner Habib Shamami of 12 and Evergreen Clark LLC, is requesting the following from the Board. Canopy setbag variance of 33 feet 6 inches, 40 feet required, 6 and 1/2 feet proposed. The property is located at the southwest corner of 12 Mile and Evergreen Roads at 20041 West 12 Mile Road, Sidwell Parcel 2415 226 030, Zone B3 General Business. This appeals to Section 5.169, subsection 2, paragraph C, Article 18, Chapter 45 of the Southfield City Code, more commonly known as the zoning ordinance.
All right. Is the appellant here? Has there been any communication with the appellant?
If I might, to the chair, no, there has not.
Okay. Well, let's move this one to the end as well, and we'll see if they join us. Will the city call the next case, please?
For ZBA case 1836, the appellant Sam Dorchin, architect, representing the owner Scott Eagle, is requesting the following from the Board. A variance of 36 feet of required landscaping along 8 Mile Road, 60 feet required, 24 feet proposed. A variance of 46 feet of required landscaping along Lasser Road, 60 feet required, 14 feet proposed. Property is located on the west side of Lasser Road, north of 8 Mile Road at 20779 Lasser Road, Sidwell Parcel 2433 476 058, Zoned I1 Industrial. This appeals to Section 5.187, Article 20, Chapter 45 of the Southfield City Code, more commonly known as the zoning ordinance.
Hi, good evening.
Good evening. My name is Sam Dorchin. I'm with Dorchin Martin Associates, 29895 Greenfield in Southfield. And to give you, excuse me, just a brief history of how I'm involved as the architect and planner, I was, I was asked about a year and a half ago to work on land combination and rezoning of this particular site. This company, Eagle Landscaping and Supply, have been on that site for, since the 1950s. We all know how the roads, Lasser and 8 Mile Road, have changed in that time. The owners were requested a few years ago to combine all of the properties. As, as time went on, they acquired the adjoining properties until there were about six or seven. And they, we accomplished the land combination about a year and a half ago. What that did was create one site with multiple zoning on them, and at the city's request, we went through the rezoning process. And at the city's request, we went through the rezoning process, which then created the variances that we're here now. I'm not saying that the variances didn't exist before, but my thought is that in combination with the roads being widened and a few other things, the variances didn't exist. They were in compliance. We've gone through all of the processes that the city has requested. In those, the result of those processes is the creation of the variances that we're asking for to be waived now.
Okay.
If you have any questions, the owners are here. I'm here and be happy to discuss it further.
Okay, thank you. Will the city read the findings effect, please?
For ZBA case 18-0036, the appellant Sam Dorchen, architect, representing the owner Scott Eagle, is requesting the following from the board. A variance of 36 feet of required landscaping along 8 Mile Road, 60 feet required, 24 feet proposed. A variance of 46 feet of required landscaping along Lasser Road, 60 feet required, 14 feet proposed. The property is located on the west side of Lasser Road, north of 8 Mile Road at 20779 Lasser Road, Sidwell Parcel 2433-476-058, Zoned I-1 Industrial. The subject property is developed with Eagle Landscaping. The property to the north is Zoned RMU Multiple Family Residential High Rise. It is developed with the Towers of Southfield Apartments. The property to the west is Zoned IL Light Industrial and is developed with Sam's Club. The properties to the south across 8 Mile Road are zoned for commercial uses within the city of Detroit. The property to the east across Lasser Road is Zoned IL Light Industrial and is developed with an office building. The site contains 6.68 acres of land with 266.05 feet of frontage on 8 Mile Road, 224 feet of frontage on Lasser Road, and a depth of 902.05 feet. The recently approved site plan proposes the conversion of the property to a landscape contractor's yard and offices, indicating areas for material storage, parking, various existing structures, and the display of plant materials and nursery stock. A rezoning of the property from B3 General Business, OS Office Service, IL Light Industrial, and P Vehicular Parking to I-1 Industrial was approved in PZR 18-0004 on October 15th, 2018. Landscaped areas which existed prior to the rezoning met the requirements of their respective zoning designations. Rezoning the property is allowed for its proposed use as a landscape contractor's yard and office required in an I-1 industrial zoning designation. And also thereby requires a 60-foot landscape setback. Landscaping at the westerly portion of the property along 8 Mile Road in front of the demolished KFC is decreasing in size, however, did not meet the 60-foot setback requirement, but did, however, meet the requirements of the prior B3 zoning, which provided approximately 40 feet in landscaping. Furthermore, two driveways along 8 Mile Road are being removed and replaced with landscaping in this area. The appellant is proposing significant landscape upgrades along both the 8 Mile Road and Lasser Road frontages. The approved landscape plan indicates a total of 16 deciduous ornamental trees, 93 deciduous shrubs, 37 evergreen shrubs, and several beds consisting of perennials and ornamental grasses.
Okay, thank you. Does the appellant agree with these facts?
Yes, they're in agreement.
Okay, is there any additional information you'd like to provide at this time?
No, but if something comes up, I'd like to be able to speak up.
Absolutely, thank you.
Thank you.
Will the city read the recommendation, please?
Staff's recommendation is to approve based upon the following. The waivers requested will have minimal adverse effects on the surrounding properties, especially since portions of landscaping along 8 Mile and Lasser Roads are existing, and there's a significant 128-foot wide landscape buffer to the west separating this property from Sam's Club. Increasing the landscaping in this area could cause encroachment into driveway widths and reduce the functionality of the site, which requires open area for large truck turning radii for materials delivery. And the proposed changes at the site will enhance the aesthetics of the area due to the removal of two driveways, curb cuts, and poor condition in the implementation of extensive landscape upgrades at the site.
Okay, thank you. Let's open public comment. Is there anybody from the public who wishes to speak on this case? Please state your name and address again.
Pamela Gerald, PO Box 155, Southfield, Michigan, 48037-0155. My telephone number is 2483460439. I'm not, like, totally sure how I feel about what's required versus what's proposed. What I do like is the fact that they purchased a very eyesore of a building that used to be a viable business back in the day, and that was the Kentucky Fried Chicken building. And I was just asking, of course, Mr. Dorchen, in reference to the Lasser Road piece of the project. And I'm not quite clear if maybe he could express it a little bit deeper. The city, they lost some of the property based on the agreement that they had with the city. Can he expand on the agreement that they had with the city? What did it consist of? And then maybe I can give a better opinion if I could come back and just get that clarified.
Well, we will certainly get that clarified. Is there anybody else from the public who wishes to speak on this case? Okay, seeing none, we'll close public comment. We'll open it up to the board. Mr. Dorchen, if you'd like to speak to her question about losing something on Lasser Road.
This is something that happened, I don't know, years ago. I don't know how many, but the Lasser Road was a two-lane road with the standard right-ofways or rights-of-way. If you go by there today, and the owners are here and probably could expand on this better than me, but you'll notice there is two lanes on, just north of their drive. There's two lanes and an island that goes pretty much the length of the high-rise apartments that are just to the north, and then another two lanes heading north. Either the city or the county, in agreement with the owner, took land or widened the right-of-way. It doesn't change the property line, naturally, the right-of-way line, but it reduces their frontage. This probably, this particular part probably should not be before you as a variance because before that happened, they were probably in compliance. But I didn't dig way into the back because nothing changed as far as the size of their property. It always stayed, their right-of-way line always stayed the same. But their area for landscaping was reduced quite a bit. And they do have drawings and documents. I don't know, it's never been a part of the city's presentation. We've worked with only the existing configuration.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Richards? Any thoughts?
Yeah, I mean, first of all, you know, I know Eagle Landscaping for many years at that location. Obviously, they come with a good resume for business. That north side of 8 Mile between Sam's Club, that's Kentucky Fried Chicken, that's been an eyesore forever and a day. So, the fact that they acquired that property for rezoning is nice. And who better to ask for a variance than a landscaping company for a landscape variance? So, based on the way they run their yard alone, I would be confident that they'd be able to make a nice display, both on the Lasher's side and on the 8 Mile side. I don't have a problem with this at all.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Weigum.
I also have no problem with it. That whole kind of Lasher 8 Mile, as you pointed out, it's been an eyesore. And you put some nice shrubs and got some evergreens in there. In the winter, you know, the deciduous trees, you can see right through them. So, I hope that you're going to back up some of them with evergreens, but I have no problem with it.
All right, thank you, Mr. Bustle.
I just had a couple of quick questions. With the rezoning, all of those buildings that were along 8 Mile, that's now incorporated into the property for Eagle Landscaping, correct?
No, their only frontage, their only property on 8 Mile Road is the old Kentucky Fried Chicken site.
Oh, okay.
And the small parcel just to the east.
All right.
But all of the businesses on 8 Mile Road and the Eagle Landscaping, if you spend any time getting to know any of them, they all work together. It's like a community. They all, they do landscaping. The Eagle people do landscaping for some of the communities. They let parking occur and traffic to go between, so.
Okay, so I wanted to clarify that. And also then, that the existing barrier along Lasser with this landscaping plan, that moves back the 36 feet or the 24 feet from the road, and that's going to be the new barrier, and then the landscaping is going to be adjusted to the east of that, correct?
You don't have a landscaping plan?
I'm looking at it, I'm just verifying that with you. Making sure I understand what I'm looking at.
Say that again, then.
So, it looks like from here, and this is your drawing LS1.
Okay.
Oh, I'm sorry, that's 8 Mile Road. LS2 is the Lasser Road.
Yes.
So, it shows, and I was just looking at the photographs that I took of that area, that right now you have a barrier that's just on the west side of the sidewalk.
Yes.
And it looks like here that what you're going to be doing is moving that barrier farther to the west with the landscaping then on the east side of it?
Yes, the fence that would form the barrier, that remains. The sidewalk is, which would have divided that landscape area into two rather difficult sites to move, is shifted to the curb line, which provides a larger area. And that'll extend down to the one to the south, to the property to the south. That'll provide a much easier to work with, larger configuration of landscape area.
Okay.
Yeah, and I think that's the one that you have.
That's what I'm looking at. Thank you.
Ms. Lesney?
I agree with the findings of the city and their recommendation.
I just try to think, it looks very nice, and I think we will call for a motion.
I know that you closed the public hearing, but I just want you to make it a little bit more clear on the record that you're not granting the change from what's required to what's proposed because of this thought process that they lost some of their property, that you're doing it for the good of the project, because he mentioned the city and the county. So, the city should not be granting something as a favor because they lost something. I just want that to be clear for the record.
Okay.
That you're doing it for all the right reasons and not because they lost something and, you know, it's some kind of.
I appreciate that. We use a lot of factors when we make our decisions, though. Okay, Mr. Weigum, will you make a motion, please? Sorry, Mr. Bustle, I'm looking at you, Mr. Bustle. I apologize. Mr. Bustle, will you make a motion, please? I'm sorry. Thank you.
Make sure I got all my stuff together here. This isn't here.
No, it's my agenda.
No, it's right here.
Yeah.
I'd like to make a motion. In the case of ZBA case 18-0036, the appellant Sam Dorchen, architect, representing the owner Scott Eagle, is requesting the following from the board. A variance of 36 feet of required landscaping along 8 Mile Road, 60 feet required, 24 feet proposed. A variance of 46 feet of required landscaping along Lasser Road, 60 feet required, 14 proposed. The property is located on the west side of Lasser, north of 8 Mile Road at 20779 Lasser Road, Sidwell Parcel Number 2433-476-058, Zoned I-1 Industrial. I move that to approve this waiver based on the following findings. The waivers requested will have a minimal adverse effect on the surrounding properties, especially since portions of landscaping along 8 Mile and Lasser Roads are existing, and there is a significant 128-foot landscaping buffer to the west separating this property from the Sam's Club. Number two, increasing the landscape in these areas could cause encroachment into driveway widths and reduce the functionality of the site, which requires open area for large truck turning radii for material delivery. And three, the proposed changes at the site will enhance the aesthetics of the area due to the removal of two driveway curb cuts in poor condition and the implementation of extensive landscape upgrades at the site.
I'll second it.
Thank you, all those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, will the city call the next case, please?
For ZBA case 18-37, the appellant Kevin Finn, dean of students, representing the owner Lawrence Technological University, is requesting the following from the board. Temporary use approval for the use of mobile offices on LTU property, second request. The property is located on the north side of 10 Mile Road, west of Northwestern Highway at 21,000 West 10 Mile Road, Sidwell Parcel 2422-451-004, Zoned ERO Education Research Office. This appeal is to Section 5.198, Article 23, Chapter 45 of the Southfield City Code, more commonly known as the zoning ordinance.
All right, thank you. Is the appellant here? Hi, good evening.
Hi, my name's Kevin Finn, dean of students at Lawrence Tech, 21,000 West 10 Mile Road. So, these units are essentially locker rooms when you go inside them. So, you see like a mobile unit when you drive by, but inside, it's where teams that travel and our football team use for, you know, changing, getting the gear and stuff like that. We are working with the planning department right now. We receive philanthropy that's helping us build a permanent grandstand that's going to be on site. Within that permanent grandstand will be a permanent locker room. However, because we want to still play our games on site next year, and the way that the construction will go, we won't be able to build a locker room or the underneath sections of the buildings that will be essentially underneath those lockers until the season is complete. So, that will mean we need to use these lockers for, temporary lockers for one more year because we're going to shut the construction down when the season begins for the players can be out there for safety of the fans and all that stuff. So, we are seeking one more year of use of that. And then when the season concludes, at the end of, I think it's the first week of November, if I remember our season correctly right now, we will get rid of them, and we're going to be building the locker room portion of those grandstands at that point and stuff. So, it's just kind of a timeline to make it work with the uses of the field. Fortunately, we already know, like, this spring, our lacrosse team will not be able to play out there because of the construction, but, you know, brighter days are ahead of them when the field is all complete and all that stuff, so.
Okay, will the city read the findings effect, please?
For ZBA case 18-37, the appellant Kevin Finn, dean of students, representing the owner Lawrence Technological University, is requesting the following from the board. Temporary use approval for the use of mobile offices on LTU property, second request. Property is located on the north side of 10 Mile Road, west of Northwestern Highway at 21,000 West 10 Mile Road, Sidwell Parcel 2422-451-004, Zoned ERO Education Research Office. The subject property is developed with the LTU athletic field. Properties to the north are Zoned RC Regional Center and are developed at the Southfield Town Center. Properties to the south across 10 Mile Road is Zoned RC Regional Center and are developed with an office building and undeveloped lots. The properties to the east across Northwestern Highway are Zoned B3 General Business and are developed with the Holiday Inn Express and Kirby's Coney Island Restaurant. The properties to the west are Zoned R4 Single Family Residential and are developed with single-family homes fronting Circle Drive. The total site contains 76.98 acres of land with approximately 2,927 feet of frontage on 10 Mile Road and an approximate depth of 3,160 feet along the Northwestern Highway Service Drive. The proposed plan indicates two existing and one relocated temporary office, mobile locker room unit measuring 60. measuring sixty by twelve by thirteen. The units are used to store uniforms and equipment and to provide meeting space during competitions for both home and away teams, and until which time a permanent structure may be constructed. Additionally, porta-potties are located on site but are screened by a six-foot-high black vinyl-coated chain-link fence with blue screening fabric. Lawrence Tech University received a one-year temporary use approval in ZBA Case 17-31 on September nineteenth, two thousand seventeen, and expired on September nineteenth, two thousand eighteen. Condition of approval was that building permits and certificates of occupancy were to be obtained from the building department prior to occupancy and use of the mobile offices and porta-potties. Does not appear that either permits or a certificate of occupancy were issued. However, LTU has stated that the use of trailers and temporary restrooms did not commence until fall two thousand eighteen.
Okay, thank you. Do you agree with those facts?
Yeah, I just wanted to add, because Sarah, it was kind enough to give me some feedback on this, and we worked with Al in the building department. A couple of things. Number one is on the building permits, there was some miscommunication with our university architect, and then the subcontractor that actually installed those trailers. We own that. That was our mistake. We are getting that addressed, you know, assuming we get approval here today. We've already been working with the subcontractor on what we will get done, and we will get those building permits done. The second thing, just on the porta-potties, a little update, Sarah, too. Next year, you won't see them at all. They'll be within the bleachers that are being installed, so it'll be nice. They won't be an eyesore, but when the season concludes, we will be building permanent restrooms as well. So, ideally, we don't want porta-potties ever. No one likes to use them, really. But, there'll be much more screen next year as well with the developing that's happening, so a couple tidbits.
Okay, will the city make a recommendation, please?
Staff's recommendation is for favorable consideration of the temporary use request with the following condition. The mobile offices and porta-potties must be removed from site by January fifteenth, two thousand twenty. Appropriate building permits and certificates of occupancy must be obtained from the building department within thirty days, which would be by Thursday, February fourteenth. And just as an aside, I did speak to Al Biscaglia in the building department, and he did confirm that...
I'm sorry, Sarah, I didn't hear that last sentence.
I'm sorry. I did confirm with Al Biscaglia in the building department today that he has been in contact with LTU regarding the required permits. So, this recommendation is based upon the following. The proposed temporary uses have not and will not adversely affect the character of the area and will not be injurious to the surrounding neighborhood nor contrary to the spirit and purpose of the zoning ordinance. The proposed site improvements will provide adequate protection to abutting uses, and no complaints or issues have arisen from the location of the trailers and temporary restrooms at their current location.
Okay, thank you. Is there anything you'd like to add at this point? Okay, we will open public comment at this point. Is there anybody who would like to speak on this case?
Pamela Gero, PO Box 155, Southfield, Michigan, 48037-0155. I was kind of concerned to see that there was some mistakes made on LTU's part because they set the bar so high. And I am in favor of the requests that they have, but I got to say one thing. You've got a fancy scoreboard. You've got some teams. If you don't get some cheerleaders. You do?
Yes.
Okay, well, I want to see the cheerleaders a little bit more. If you don't show the cheerleaders a little bit more, then we're going to shut it down. I'm in favor of it.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anybody else that wishes to speak to this case? Seeing none, we'll close public comment and open it up to the board. Mr. Weigum?
I have no problem with this. My one question is, you're going to construct facilities sometime?
We are. So, we're actually working right now, so on that area where you saw like the temporary bleachers last year, that will be a permanent grandstand. It will seat about twenty-one hundred people next year that we're building. And obviously, we're working with the planning department and then the city council for more approval. We're, you know, anticipating favorable on that, but when that, assuming all those approvals happen, what you would see by next August is twenty-one hundred seats constructed, more like a, you see that typical high school stadium that's modern. And that, what you don't want to do is wait the time of the construction is we don't want to not play off-campus next year. So, before we get home games, we have to shut the construction down. When the players are out there, the fans for safety and, you know, kind of fence, you know, do all the stuff you have to do to shut construction materials out for nobody gets in the areas they shouldn't be or get hurt. But, that is where next year, when the season shuts down, we'll build those locker rooms. And the drawings we have submitted, the locker rooms will be built as a permanent building underneath those bleachers, like, again, like you commonly see at a high school bleacher system and stuff. So, it's, you know, we have that positive coming. It's just working with the timelines of construction, and so that's kind of where we're at.
What is your timeline?
So, our timeline is on the grandstands will be implemented by August of two thousand and nineteen, and then by the, starting construction again in November of two thousand and nineteen, where the bleachers and those, I mean, sorry, not the bleachers, but where the locker rooms would be, would be after the season in November and completing that for the following year or so, kickoff in August of two thousand and twenty. But, we don't need those lockers. We'll actually probably move those lockers out, I would say, November of next year, once the season's done sooner than January, because there's no use for them in the wintertime. Teams don't practice out there right now. So, but, I guess this gives us a couple of extra days for some reason. But, our timeline is to, once the season is done, to begin, resume construction. And that is, trust me, from a student athlete looking at schools, not having permanent lockers out there right now is something that hurts us, you know, because our competitors have those, and it's athletic facilities factors in a young man and woman's decision on the school they choose. So, we want to get those done as soon as possible.
You've added football to your program, right?
Yeah, it will, and for our women's sports, soccer teams that are out there and lacrosse. It's, we, when we build like athletic facilities, we do it all through philanthropy as well. That's another part of it. I would love to be able to go to the state president, take it from my operating budget, let's get this, had this done last year, but we do it through philanthropy. Good news is we received the confirmation of philanthropy, and we're moving forward. But, you know, we didn't want to play those, not have home games there like next year, and that's, so looking at the construction guidelines and timelines and stuff, that's what kind of impacted that.
Well, there's nothing more than the city and our board that wants LTU to be a success.
Thank you. I appreciate that.
Mr. Rogers?
Yeah, I was just to say that Lawrence Tech is a shining star in Southfield. Very progressive in everything you do, adding buildings. It's, you know, I'm not concerned at all that this temporary permit is going to be a kick the can down the road. I think that, I know you added your football program a couple of years ago, a few years ago. So, in its due time, everything will have, you know, be aged, and you'll know more about what to do. But, right now, you know that you're, in order to compete against other football programs, you know you got to put on the field. So, I think that inherent, that inherently will cause you to move faster. I'm sure of that.
For any team, their office is really their locker room, as you think about it.
Especially if you're dealing with philanthropy. They want to see that their money's being moved, not sitting in a...
That is correct.
Piggy bank.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Bustle.
I had a original question about the origin of the project. When the variance was granted back in two thousand seventeen, when was the original completion of the project scheduled?
At that point, so like the whole field itself, the grandstand and all that, I think we were hoping like a two-to-three-year guideline timeline. We weren't, we weren't really too sure because at that point, we did not have a donor lined up.
You didn't have what?
We did not have a donor identified that had confirmed of money.
Okay.
So, we were hoping in two to three years. The good news is, we did get, you know, a donation here. The full project, and I don't know if you've seen the whole vision of it, is other things that would happen at the field as well. So, we're kind of doing it in different segments, but, you know, we're aggressively working on it, and...
But, right now, the capital money is approved so that you can begin and complete construction so that everything will be, all the temporary structures will be removed by January two thousand twenty?
Correct. That is correct.
That is the plan?
That is the plan.
And everything's in place to see that plan through?
Yeah, definitely.
Okay, that's all I needed.
Yep.
Ms. Lesney?
I agree with everything that's been said here tonight.
Okay. I just wondered, is there any upkeep plans for the temporary structures? I look like maybe they could use a coat of paint or...
Yeah, we actually, I don't know if you saw, we did do, if you know what fat heads are, those are those large stickers?
Sure.
We did put those on the doors to make them look more...
Yes.
They are, I mean, I can't lie. They're not, if I want to, I'll bet that. But, we added those. We'll look to see what else we can do.
Okay.
So, yeah, they're...
Yeah, I mean, they're temporary. I understand. You don't want to put a lot of money into them, but they...
But, the fat heads works well, because you can actually pull them off afterwards.
And use them elsewhere.
Use them elsewhere, and so we'll look to see if we can expand that.
Okay, sounds good. Ms. Lesney, will you make a motion?
Certainly. Regarding ZBA Case 18-37, where the appellant, Kevin Finn, Dean of Students, representing Lawrence Technological University, is requesting the temporary use approval for the use of mobile offices on LTU's property, a second request. The property is located on the north side of Ten Mile Road, west of Northwestern Highway at 21,000 West Ten Mile, Sidwell Parcel 2422-451-004, zoned ERO Education Research Office. I move that we grant this temporary use request with the following conditions. That the mobile offices and porta-potties must be removed from the site by January fifteenth, two thousand twenty. Appropriate building permits and certificates of occupancy must be obtained from the building department within thirty days, which is Thursday, February fourteenth, two thousand and nineteen. This grant is based on the following, that the proposed temporary uses will not have adverse effects on the character of the area and will not be injurious to the surrounding properties nor contrary to the spirit and purpose of the zoning ordinance. The proposed site improvements will provide adequate protection to abutting uses, and no complaints or issues have arisen from the location of the trailers and temporary restrooms at their current location.
All right, thank you. Do I have a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All right, we look forward to seeing it completed. Thank you. All right, will the city call the next case, please?
For ZBA Case 18-38, the appellant, Brian Nager of Advance LLC, owner, is requesting the filing from the board. Variance of eight point eight-three feet of north side yard setback to accommodate a proposed lot split, thirty-two point eight-three feet required, twenty-four feet proposed, and a variance of twelve point nine-five feet of east side yard setback to accommodate a proposed lot split, forty point five feet required, twenty-seven point five-five feet proposed. The property is located on the west side of Greenfield Road, just north Nine Mile Road at 23077 Greenfield Road, Sidwell Parcel 2425-476009, zone B3 General Business. This is, this appeal is to Section 5.194, Article 22, Chapter 45 of the Southfield City Code, more commonly known as the zoning ordinance.
Thank you. Good evening.
Hi, good evening. My name is Keith Mazias. I'm with the Nager Companies, 600 North Old Woodward, Birmingham, Michigan.
Okay.
We're here tonight to request a lot split for the Advance Retail or the Advance, from the Advance Office Building at Northwest Corner of Nine Mile and Greenfield. As part of the site plan that was approved last year, we created a small retail component at that site. What we're here today is just to create, to new tax parcel for that retail. It's more of an accounting issue than anything, so we have our own tax parcel ID number, and we get a tax bill for that property. There'll be no changes. There's no changes impacting the approved site plan, and frankly, it will continue to operate as a single development. The appropriate easements for cross-access, cross-parking, and utilities was drafted and has been reviewed by the city, including the engineering department. All comments that they made have been incorporated, and pending tonight's approval are in recordable format.
Okay, sounds good. Will the city read the findings effect, please?
For ZBA Case 18-38, the appellant, Brian Nager of Advance LLC, owner, is requesting the filing from the board. A variance of eight point eight-three feet of north side yard setback to accommodate a proposed lot split, thirty-two point eight-three feet required, twenty-four feet proposed. A variance of twelve point nine-five feet of east side yard setback to accommodate a proposed lot split, forty point five feet required, twenty-seven point five-five feet proposed. The property is located on the west side of Greenfield Road, just north of Nine Mile Road, at 23077 Greenfield Road, Sidwell Parcel 2425-476009, zone B3 General Business. The subject property is developed with the Advance Office Building Associated Parking Deck and is currently under construction with a retail shopping center and Arby's Restaurant. Properties to the north and west are zoned B3 General Business and are developed with a Dunkin' Donuts and an office building affiliated with Providence Hospital respectively. The property to the south across Nine Mile Road is zoned B2 Planned Business and is developed with the Greenfield Plaza Shopping Center. Properties to the east across Greenfield Road are zoned for commercial and office uses within the city of Oak Park and are developed with a gas station and office building. The total site contains eight point one-four acres of land. There's six hundred and forty feet of frontage on Greenfield Road and a depth of five hundred and fifty feet. The approved site plan indicates the demolition of a portion of the existing parking deck on site and the construction of an eight thousand nine hundred and eighty gross square foot retail center with standalone restaurant. The petitioner has applied to the assessing department to split the subject parcels into two with the existing office building and parking deck on one parcel and the restaurant and shopping center on a second. A separate parcel ID and legal description are required for financing purposes and to allow for the potential future sale of these individual parcels. The variances are needed for setback deficiencies between the existing parking deck, existing office building, and the proposed property line. In the B3 General Business zoning designation, side yards are not required along interior lot lines when the building does not exceed twenty-five feet in height. Where the height exceeds twenty-five feet, the minimum yard shall be determined by a footnote in the zoning ordinance, which results in the need for a, an eight point eight-three foot and twelve point nine-five foot variance respectively. ZBA Case 17-42 was granted on February twentieth, two thousand eighteen, for variances of five foot, five feet, two inches of landscape buffer along Greenfield Road, twelve and a half feet required, seven feet, four inches proposed, and a hundred and fifteen parking spaces for the entire site. This variance is still relevant and will remain intact as it runs with the land. There will be no physical changes made from the council-approved site plan as part of the land division and side yard setback variance requests. The site will continue to function as one development with shared driveway and easement agreements. Each parcel has the proper number of parking spaces as required by the zoning ordinance and with consideration to the prior ZBA case granted on their own respective property.
All right, thank you. Do you agree with those facts?
Yes.
Okay, is there anything else you'd like to add at this time? No? Okay. Will the city read the recommendation, please?
Staff's recommendation is to approve the variances requested with the following conditions. The appellant must complete the land division process with the assessing department, and the appellant must provide the planning department with a copy of a cross-access agreement recorded by Oakland County between the two properties. This recommendation is based upon the following. The proposed building setback variance requests are needed solely to allow for the split of the existing parcel for potential future sale and will have minimal adverse effects on the adjoining properties. The site will continue to function as one development. The existing office building and parking deck were under twenty-five feet. No interior setbacks would be required.
All right, thank you. Does the appellant have anything to add after hearing the recommendation? Okay, at this point, we'll open public comment.
Pamela Gero, PO Box 155, Southfield, Michigan, 48037-0155. My telephone number's 2483460439. First, I would like to say that Mr. Nager has been a very good corporate citizen in the city of Southfield. It appears as if he's like a development or redevelopment doctor. He takes areas that are slightly in distress, and he turns them into something that's really nice. I was concerned about whether or not the initial plans are different than what he wants to do now. The only concern that I have is when developments or properties or plans come before the city and there's one requirement, why is there always a request to go smaller than the requirement? So, if you could just expand on that a little bit more. Because of who he is and what he's done in the city, I would certainly be in favor of it. So, I just want to know why the smaller amount, going from thirty-two point eight-three down to twenty-four, going from forty point five down to twenty-seven five-five, and then the reason for getting the two different parcel numbers. And I think Ms. Malali mentioned something about the cross-access. If that can just be expanded on a little bit more, but other than that, I'm in favor of his request.
Okay, thank you.
And thank you for what you do for the city.
Is there anyone else from the public who wishes to speak on this case? Okay, seeing none, we'll close public comment. I mean, I think the, to answer your first question about why the split, I think, was answered in the facts, which is they're interested in financing that small area. And in order to finance it, it needs to have its own parcel ID and its own legal description and be its own separate piece of land. So, that's the real reason.
Financing for the office building or for the retail?
For the retail.
Okay.
And I don't know anything about cross-access agreements. Sarah, can you speak to those at all?
If I might, to the chair.
If I might, to the chair, it's simply to allow traffic because they have shared driveways between the two new created parcels, they have to have a legal document which permits there to be cross-traffic between the two parcels.
Okay, and since they're functioning as one development, that's not a concern.
Correct, and right now, it would just be signed by the same owner because it's under single ownership, but it would run with the land, so if it's transferred to a new owner, it would run with the land.
Okay. And, okay, so let's open it up to the board and we can talk about the variance requests. Ms. Lesney?
I'm in favor of the recommendations of the city. I think they have thought this through, I call this housekeeping. There have been several cases of like this that have come before us over several years, and it's just a matter of what each development needs in order to function it the best way it can.
Okay, Mr. Bustle?
The only question I had was to Ms. Malali, and that has to do with point number five. Can you please explain the justification or the rationale behind the footnote for a building being twenty, over twenty-five feet high for the additional side-type?
If I might, through the chair to Mr. Bustle, I think the overall intent is to make sure you have a proper amount of open space. So if you have a very, very tall building, the idea that you want a larger setback to, you know, give the appearance of more open space, it's not crowding the building that might possibly be next door.
It's not a fire code issue?
No, no. It would still have to meet all building code requirements, fire code issues. It's simply a matter of basically not permitting a large, large building to be right up next to a property line, you know, overshadowing a smaller building. But in this case, it's still functioning the same. It's a little bit different scenario than two independent owners, somebody creating a large, large building next to something that's already existing.
If in the future, there was going to be an extension of the advanced building, per se, maybe to make it higher, and the ownership of the second parcel had changed to a different party, then they would have to apply for variance?
If I might, through the chair again to Mr. Bustle, yes, they would have to apply, even if it was the same owner, because now the two created parcels, we do, it's from the property line. So if they were to, you know, raise the height of the parking deck or the existing advanced building, they would have to come back for variance, it would actually increase the setback requirement, and they would have to come back to the board.
Okay, thank you. That's all I needed, thank you.
Okay, Mr. Wagon?
I have no problem with it. I agree with the city. This is basically a financial thing, so good luck.
Okay, Mr. Rogers?
I was just curious, I understand you're trying to create financial arrangements for two separate parcels. I just, each parcel will have its own utilities ran to it separately, or is the whole development still, you know, one sewer lead, one, one gas line, one electrical drop? In other words, if you go in tomorrow, after you get this done, the day after you get your C of O, you go and sell one of these, are they, are they like Siamese twins where they're, you know, everything, you know, one building in the future even fits a second owner, will affect, adversely affect whatever they decide to do with it?
No, the new retail component will have its own, is being fed by its own new DTE line for electric, for consumers, Comcast, AT&amp;T, you know, all of that.
So if there is a future sale, it is a separation?
It is, it is separate.
Is there a separation right down in that set?
Yeah.
Other than the cross-access?
Other than the cross-access, which will always have to be there.
Correct, right.
Unless everything's leveled and they rezone it all over again. Okay.
Okay. I also agree with the city. I have seen this often with many developments. So, Mr. Rogers, will you make a motion for us?
With regards to ZBA case number eighteen dash thirty-eight, the appellant, Brian Nager of Advance LLC owner, is requesting the following from the board: a variant, one, a variance of eight-point-eight-three feet of north side-yard setback to accommodate a proposed lot split, thirty-two-point-eight-three feet required, twenty-four feet proposed; number two, a variance of twelve-point-nine-five feet of east side-yard setback to accommodate a proposed lot split, forty-and-a-half feet required, twenty-seven-point-five-five feet proposed. The property is located on the west side of Greenfield Road, just north of Nine Mile Road, at two-three-zero-seven-seven Greenfield Road. I move that we approve the variances requested with the following conditions: number one, the appellant must complete the land division process with the assessing department; number two, the appellant must provide the planning department with a copy of a cross-access agreement recorded by Oakland County between the two properties. This is based, this, this motion is based upon the following: number one, the proposed building setback variance requests are needed solely to allow for the split of existing parcel for future potential sales and will have a minimal adverse effect on the adjoining properties. The site will continue to function as one development; number two, if the existing office building and parking deck were under twenty-five feet, there would be no interior setbacks required.
Okay, thank you. Can I have a motion? I'm sorry, a second?
Second.
All right, thank you. All those in favor?
Aye.
All right, good luck, thank you. Have a good night. Okay, so we had moved case eighteen thirty-five to the bottom of the agenda, which is where we are now, so will the city call that case, please, or read that case, please?
For ZBA case eighteen thirty-five, the appellant, Metro Detroit Signs, representing the owner, Sasa Development LLC, is requesting the following waiver from the board for a ground support sign in the corner clearance area. Property is located on the east side of Telegraph Road between the I six-ninety-six-M-ten freeway system and Civic Center Drive at two-six-three-eight-eight Telegraph Road, Sidwell Parcel two-four-two-zero, two-two-six-zero-two-zero, Zone B three, general business. This appeals to Section eight-point-three-six, Article three, Chapter ninety-nine, in the Southfield City Code, more commonly known as the sign ordinance.
Thank you, good evening.
Good evening.
How are you doing?
Hi, great, thank you. My name is Paul Eders. I'm from Metro Signs and Lighting, one-one-four-four-four, Colts Avenue in Warren.
Thank you. And can you give us a quick summary of what you're asking for and?
Sure, terrific. Yeah, we, what we'd like is for the board to consider a setback variance. We have sort of an unusual circumstance here where the, the sign that Starbucks here or the development is proposing, Starbucks being the main tenant that they have, is in a pretty tight island there, and there's really nowhere else in the property that that can go, and they have a little bit of a difficulty, and we're hoping to get, stay a little bit closer to the road, because as you're headed north on Telegraph Road, you come back from Berg Road, a lot of cars are already starting to move over into the right lane to get up to start head to the expressway, and we'd like to make sure that that sign is as visible as possible so that people can get into the proper lane and get into that deceleration lane to start slowing down there. The difficulty that we have is because in the corner triangle clearance, we'd also like for you to consider, is that because it's a little bit of an unusual sight there with the boulevard on Telegraph, you know, typically, the cars are turning right there, you're concerned about traffic coming from the other way. In this instance, they're across the boulevard on the opposite side, so we're never going to be pulling into a lane of traffic that would impede somebody else from coming that direction. So we think it's a little bit of a unique circumstance to that effect.
Okay, thank you. Will the city read the findings effect, please?
For ZBA case eighteen thirty-five, the appellant, Metro Detroit Signs, representing the owner, Sasa Development LLC, is requesting the following waiver from the board for a ground support sign in the corner clearance area. Property is located on the east side of Telegraph Road between the I six-ninety-six-M-ten freeway system and Civic Center Drive at two-six-three-eight-eight Telegraph Road, Sidwell Parcel two-four-two-zero, two-two-six-zero-two-zero, Zone B three, general business. To the north, the property is zoned OS Office Service and currently developed with an office building; to the south, the properties are zoned OS Office Service and are currently developed with office buildings; to the west, across Telegraph Road, the properties are zoned B three, general business, and are developed with two gasoline stations; to the east, the properties are zoned OS Office Service and are two, single-family residential, and are an undeveloped slope and the river, the Rouge River floodplain. The site contains one-point-four-six acres of land, there is three-hundred-and-twenty-three-point-three feet of frontage on Telegraph Road at a depth of two-hundred-and-twelve-point-two-eight feet. Telegraph Road at the site has a boulevarded, a boulevard separating north and southbound traffic. The site consists of a sixty-nine-hundred gross-square-foot retail center with a coffee shop, restaurant with drive-through, and one vacant tenant space. The parking required is fifty-one spaces with fifty-two provided, fifty-one plus a bike rack. Landscape exceeds the amount required, the elevations of the building indicate are used of smooth blade, smooth face block, metal siding, metal canopies, and glass. There is one main entrance exit on the parcel and one shared entrance exit on the adjacent parcel. The survey of signage at the site reveals the following: three wall signs for Starbucks Coffee, two wall signs granted in ZBA case seventeen forty-eight, and one directional drive-through sign; one auxiliary sign, menu board, for Starbucks Coffee, granted a waiver in height in ZBA case seventeen forty-eight, and currently, one foundation and sign structure installed without required sign permit or waiver for a ground sign in the corner clearance area. The sign ordinance in the B three, general business zone, permits one ground support sign at the site with a maximum area of eighty square feet, maximum height of fifteen feet, and a minimum setback of two feet from the property line and not in any corner clearance area. The appellant proposes to install one internally illuminated ground support sign on the recently erected sign basin structure, eighty square feet in area, thirteen foot two in overall height, at an eight-point-seven-seven foot setback from the property line in the corner clearance area at the southeast corner of the parcel. This proposal requires a waiver of the corner clearance provision.
All right, thank you. Can you step back to the microphone, please? Do you agree with those facts?
I sure do, yes.
Okay, is there anything else you'd like to add at this point?
No, ma'am, not at this time.
Okay, just stay in the front row for us.
Okay.
Will the city read the recommendation, please?
Yes, staff's recommendation is for favorable consideration of a ground sign in the corner clearance area with the following conditions: the ground sign be as presented, signed, and dated as an exhibit for the case; a readable address or series of addresses be placed on the supporting base below the sign to be visible to traffic along Telegraph Road; the sign permit be submitted along with sealed engineering drawings showing foundation, support, and sign, along with any third-party or other inspections performed, and the sign permit will not, will only be issued if the owner can provide proof that the footing and support structure has been properly inspected and meets all building code requirements and matches the submitted sealed engineered drawings; and the appellant agrees to eliminate any use of prohibited sign types such as banner balloons, balloon structures, portable signs of any type, flags other than country or state designations, or individuals or vehicles displaying signage visible to the right-of-way. This recommendation is based on the following: the new ground support sign at the proposed location should provide visibility for traffic because of the single-direction traffic at the site due to Telegraph Roads Boulevard. Limited landscape area exists at the site to locate ground signage, and all other requirements for ground signage have been met with this proposal.
Okay, thank you. Is there anything the appellant would like to add? No, okay, so we'll open public comment. Is there anyone here from the public who wishes to speak on this case? Seeing none, we will close public comment and open it up to the board. Ms. Lesney?
Yes, there seems to be some, some part of the base was previously built before permits. Who's responsible for checking that out, maintaining, making sure it's correct?
If I might, through the chair to Ms. Lesney, that would be me. I do happen to know that, that I believe that it, I do know that it has engineering, an engineering drawing for it that was on the site plan for the original building. There may have, must have been some sort of mix-up with the original builder, maybe it was on their contract when they built the building to install the base also for the sign like they would for a light pole or anything else. So that's my guess how they probably put it in. I had driven by when I was doing fire alarm tests and various things in the building as a building inspector, noticed that this was going on and kept asking and asking and asking, you know, you should, you have to get this approved, this location approved, it doesn't meet an ordinance's requirements. Finally, it came to the point where I said to them, you know, you, you have to get in front of the Board of Appeals, and that's when this, this whole thing came to us. But I do know that there were some third-party inspections done, which is permitted by code on the footing, I'll just double-check those, and I do know that there's engineering on the footing, I just haven't looked at it. But I will physically check both those items and make sure they match, or there will not be a permit issued, or until they do match.
Okay, so do you have those engineering drawings as the sign company?
I have a copy of the engineer drawings. I'm not privy to what is actually was done. We got involved after the foundation was done, so I can check with the owner as well.
I know, and we approved the, the original proposal of building this, this little shopping center, we were concerned that the, the sign would have to be located in the corner clearance area, because there just was no other place to put it, and a sign that no one can see is useless. So it, it serves a function besides advertising, it does direct traffic, and the traffic needs to be directed at this point, it's a very busy section of the highway. So I, I agree with the findings of the city and, and agree that they should, that this needs to be followed through before any sign permit can be given.
Okay, Mr. Bustle?
Just, just to ask Mr. Gerdella a question, so you're saying on the original building plans, it did show that some, this signed base being in this location?
No, if I might, it showed a footing detail, it looked like, I didn't look real close at the plans on the site, I was there for other things, I was there for building inspections, but it did look like there was something drawn on it for there, didn't really say what it was, it could have been a section of a wall, it could have been anything, it didn't detail the sign, it just showed a block base, and I thought, well, maybe, you know, a lot of times, we have those, those fences where they have a little section of that and a section of fence, I thought it could be that, I didn't really look into it any farther at that point because I wasn't the lead building inspector on it, I was just there for fire alarm tests, but when they finally built it and then put the pole in it, that's when I said, oh, wait a minute, you put a pole in the center, that must be a sign. So that's when I kind of figured it out.
Are you aware of the chronology of this?
I'm, I'm not, no, no, sir.
Okay, so it wasn't, it wasn't your company that put that base in, you're just putting the sign that goes on top of the base?
That's correct, yes, sir.
Okay, that's, that's all I needed to know, thank you.
Mr. Wagon?
I had general concerns about putting a Starbucks or something there because of the, you have heavy traffic on Telegraph Road coming north, and then they're merging to go into the freeway, and you have a Starbucks there of people coming over. So my first question is, have there been any accidents?
I, we haven't had any reports on, on any issues there. Council did look at that issue as far as how traffic was going to move into a decelerating to get in there prior to that. So council did look at that when they looked at approving the site plan, so.
Okay, then my next question is, you're putting up a sign that's going to restrict vision again in the corner clearance area with traveling coming from the west, from the south, coming north, and now they won't be able to see perhaps these people coming out the exit? Is that, did you look at that? Was that looked at?
If I might, yes, it was. So it won't, the, the exiting, if you notice, there's a good distance between where the sign is and where the entrance and exit is to the site to the north.
I understand that, I understand.
So that is more than out of our corner clearance area there. I mean, it's so far out of the corner clearance, it's ridiculous. The only place where the corner clearance provision comes into is at that southern, the southern exit, the shared exit, and if you look at that, you're looking south, you're not looking north because it's boulevard, so a traffic coming out is going to be looking south to make sure traffic's clear, and there'll be nothing in their way, the sign won't be in their way, it'll be in front of them. So it shouldn't block anybody's visibility exiting onto Telegraph Road.
And you, and, I mean, it's there, I, I mean, they're going to come out, why do you say that they can't?
Because they're not looking that way, they're looking-
They're looking south because there's only one direction of traffic.
That's correct.
And the sign's to the north of them. On that, that's separate.
So you're sitting, you're coming out this way, the sign's over here. So you're looking at traffic coming this way, and you're coming out, or you're exiting here.
Yeah, I was looking at this right here, the exit here.
So the main exit?
Yes.
Is concerned as the main exit?
Correct.
And the large sign blocking people coming from, heading north?
Yes.
At the main exit?
Can you just say that?
Sorry, at the main exit, coming out of the main exit?
Yes.
The large sign being to your south with traffic coming north, does that block?
That is, so, it won't because it's out of the 25-foot clearance area. So you have a greater distance than 25 feet to the sign, so think of it this way.
So 25 feet is the limit?
It's a corner, 25-foot triangle that gives you that ability to look around it. But if you think of it this way, is, I'm sorry, through the chair to Mr. Wygum. You could put that sign without coming to the Board of Appeals for a waiver of the corner clearance area, you could put that sign closer to that other exit that you're coming out of, in the middle of the property, and it wouldn't be in the corner clearance area, and it would be more of a visibility hazard if that's what you're stating.
Like halfway down?
Yeah, like halfway down, it would be even closer to that exit, but it would still be, it would be permitted by ordinance because it's more than 25 feet away from that other entrance. So this is actually a better situation, being the farthest away from that exit where you have to look to this out.
I understand what you're saying, but I see this as a, as a site that is different than any site that we've looked at. We've got heavy traffic on Telegraph, and they are speeding. And, I mean, if you go the speed limit, they'll blow you off. And they're coming over and they're going out the, over to the freeway, and I have safety concerns there. So that's my concern, and you say 25 feet, it's more than 25 feet, so they should see them coming around there and good luck.
If I might, through the chair, that's what the ordinance provides. Any more than that would be trying to ask them to go beyond what the ordinance requires for a distance for a corner clearance. That corner clearance, 25, 25-foot corner clearance, is not only within the site ordinance, it's within other ordinances, traffic ordinances within the city. It's more, it's in the zoning ordinance, it's in all the ordinance, and it's consistent with that 25, 25-foot clear vision triangle is what it's known as.
I just want to mention also, as far as traffic is concerned, there's two office buildings there that these people managed to get in and out along the same area just a few feet away.
That's a lot different because you've got a restaurant here that are coming and going and carry out. These other people go in there to work and then they come out in the evening. It's not the same.
But the only thing we're here tonight to discuss is the placement of the sign, not the feasibility of this project.
The corner clearance area is for, just so you can see, that's what it's for.
I agree with you on that.
Mr. Rogers?
It's hard to disagree with what everyone's saying. I'm just curious, through all this communication, did Starbucks put this big footing in because they had a cement truck in there pouring all the curbs for the parking lot, and they just were hoping to God that the, or was it, you know, like you said, there was a, you know, a footprint on the original foundation, they poured it. But even then, it seems, it seems like they're just hoping for the best. That's a very large footing structure to put in and hoping that something good happens from it. But as far as the actual visibility situation, I don't, I can't argue with what Les is saying, but it does, it's far enough away from that main entrance/exit that it's not an issue. As, in my opinion, is also, like, when people get familiar driving northbound on Telegraph and they know there's a Starbucks right before the exit ramp to the freeways, you know, over time, you say, hey, stay away from that right lane. Now, this is probably for the person that doesn't travel northbound on Telegraph very often and is getting into the ramp to go to one of the freeways, and all of a sudden there's a big traffic jam perhaps. But that remains to be seen if that's going to be a long-term problem. So far, it doesn't sound like it has been, even before the Starbucks got in there and there was the office buildings going in and out there. And I understand the idea of having people come in there for five minutes grabbing a coffee and leaving, there's a lot more in and out. But, you know, we've had other cases on Telegraph Road where I think the visibility for signage for, is horrendous, and it affects the businesses, much smaller-scale businesses. I'm not trying to say that Starbucks deserves anything extra over them, but this doesn't seem like a, an unreasonable, you know, venture. I don't think, you know, that's where I stand.
Okay.
If I might, could I just, through the chair to Mr. Rogers, the board and to the board as a whole, the board kind of keeps referring to this as a Starbucks sign. It was put in by the owner of the plaza. So it wasn't put, Starbucks didn't put this in. The owner of the plaza, the, you know, when they built the white box of the plaza, that got put in, and it was always, I'm guessing, it was always intended to be a multi-tenant, you know, service more than one that was in there. So it's really not fair.
It's not a Starbucks issue.
Blame it on Starbucks or anything, you know.
Yeah, it's an owner of the building developments issue, okay.
Ed, what is the maximum height in this district?
15 foot.
It's 15, okay, because it seems big. It seems like a really big sign when you're standing there. And even when you look at this picture, it looks like it's enormous, which it maybe isn't exactly the scale as it's drawn on there. But, yeah, I mean, I don't, okay, well, I mean, I agree with Mr. Rogers. I think the more people drive it, the more people will be comfortable with it, and the more people will know that a Starbucks is there, and you probably need to avoid that right lane if it's backing up. And it looks like maybe a big boy is going in the other open space. There's a little big boy man inside of it, so.
If I might, to the chair, a big boy.
A little bit, I mean, he's a big little boy. I mean, it's really large.
I didn't think big boys were being built anywhere.
Did you see it? I know, that's what I thought as well, but, I mean, there's going to be a parking issue there, I think, which is going to lead to backups on Telegraph, so. Well, hopefully the sign will help and not cause more confusion.
Or a lot of tow trucks being sent to that office building parking lot.
Okay, well, who wants to make a motion? Nobody wants this one.
I will move, I will move in case, well, first, I'm going to make a motion, move case 18 dash 35 from the table.
Excuse me, is it, we did open it up to the public, correct? Comments?
She did.
That's why I bring it to the floor officially.
It wasn't on the table. We had removed it from the table before. We had just postponed it.
She did.
No, we never removed it from the table. That was the other case.
We didn't table, we just postponed it to the end of the meeting.
We tabled both these motions, 35 and 36.
Yeah, we just didn't call it.
That was 34 that was removed from the table.
All right, thank you. So, thank you for taking it off the table. I appreciate it.
In the case of ZBAC case 18 dash 35, the appellant Metro signs, Metro Detroit signs representing the owner, Sasa Development LLC, requesting the following waiver from the board, ground support sign in the corner clearance area. The property is located on the east side of Telegraph Road between the I-696-M10 freeway system and Civic Center Drive at 26388 Telegraph Road, Sidwell Parcel number 2420-226-020, zoned B3 General Business. Move to approve the waiver with the following conditions: that the ground sign be presented, signed, and dated as an exhibit for the, as an exhibit for the case; a readable address or series of addresses be placed on the supporting base below the sign to be visible to traffic along Telegraph Road, preferably, and this would be facing south. The signed permit shall be submitted along with the sealed engineering drawings showing the foundation, support, and sign along with third-party or other inspections performed. The signed permit will only be issued if the owner can provide proof that the footing and support structure has been properly inspected and meets all building code requirements and matches sealed engineering drawings. The appellant agrees to eliminate the use of prohibited sign types such as banners, balloons, balloon structures, portable signs of any time, flags other than country or state designations or individuals or vehicles displaying signage visible to the right of the way. Direct this recommendation to approve the waiver is based on the following: a new ground support sign at the proposed location should be provide visibility for traffic because of the single-direction traffic at the site due to Telegraph Road Boulevard. Limited landscape areas exist at the site to locate ground signage, and all other requirements for ground signage have been met with this proposal.
All right. Thank you. All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, good luck. Oh, all those opposed?
I abstain.
Oh, you abstain, okay, thank you. So that's four ayes, your request is granted.
Terrific, thank you. May I ask one question? To add the address, is there a stipulation for the minimum size or height that the numerals need to be?
If I might, so they're readable to the road.
Okay.
Okay, so we have one case, 1810. Can we, is the appellant here for 1810? Okay, so we need to decide what to do for 1810. Do we want to table it to the next meeting?
No.
No?
If I might, to the chair and to the board, we're requesting to cancel February 5th because we don't have any other cases.
Okay.
So the next available meeting, I'm just going to check the ZBAC, do we have any cases for the second one in February? So then, we could move it to the second meeting in Feb.
Yes.
Okay.
If I might, if you notice, the submittal date for this ZBAC case was May 2018. We've been having some issues with getting the information and getting the appellant to provide and do what they wanted to do. The board obviously can do what they would like, but I would not be opposed to tabling it to a date uncertain, simply because it's been a challenge to get information and get them to meet the deadlines they need to do.
If I might, that's information I didn't have, and that's fine. The other choice the board has would be to postpone it, not table it, would be to postpone it to a date uncertain. And if we do that, we will have to re-advertise, which will incur additional costs, so.
I have no problem with that. I mean, if they're not interested enough to call you or to give some excuse or some reason, the board is all here, where are they? So I have no problem at all with saying, it has to be re-advertised, you have to pay another cost.
Well, they don't have.
If I might, through the chair, to Mr. Wygum and the whole board, unless, the only way they would have to pay an additional cost is if you dismissed it without prejudice and made them reapply again. We can't assign additional fees other than what were assigned at the first part of the case, at the first part of the submittal of the case. So, again, if you postponed it to, so if you tabled it to the next possible meeting...
It doesn't have to be advertised.
And we wouldn't have to re-advertise, and they didn't show up at the next meeting, then I would say your next option would be, if we're concerned about costs here, your next option would be to dismiss it without prejudice at the next meeting. So you've given the person a second shot to be at the next meeting without having to outlay any costs from the city whatsoever because it's already been advertised and it's already been discussed, so.
And I think that's been our standard practice as well.
Not always.
No, I mean, you could honestly, between, through the, through the chair to the board, there's three options: dismiss it without prejudice, make them reapply, pay new fees; table it to a date certain, and if he doesn't show up, we deal with it at that case. The third one is postpone it to a date uncertain, and what that will trigger is the additional responsibility on the city's side to re-advertise it when we do get a date certain.
Does that, does that bring a cost to the?
To the city. The cost is borne by the city, not by the appellant.
I don't want to do that.
I recommend that we table to the next meeting, which is February 19.
Nineteenth.
Thank you.
So moved.
All in favor? Or can I have a second? Sorry.
I have just a question.
Yes, ma'am.
Does the application, it was, the original application was May 10th of last year. Does that expire on May 10th of?
If I might, through the chair, only if it was a waiver that was granted, it would have 18 months, and if they didn't get a permit for it, then it would be. But not simply an application. If you submitted an application, you know, you pay the fee, there's no, there's no date. You could submit the application, have it sit there for two years if you wanted to. There's no cost incurred by the city until the city starts, until a date is picked for it to be put on an agenda, and the city has to send out notices to the public.
Okay, then I second it.
All right. All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, so, put your name and your case, we'll get them back on the next one. So we have, that's the end of the public hearing. It doesn't look like we have any minutes. I need a motion to cancel the meeting for February 5th since we have no cases.
So moved.
Can I have a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, and then it looks like we had an email from Legal on question, Mr. Wygum's questions. I don't know if, is there any discussion in regards to that? We don't need to read this into the minutes bump. Any questions, any concerns? Did we ever, the end of it referenced, send a response for Mr. Bustle's questions. Did we get that? Anybody get that? The last sentence says, I will send a response to the question presented by Mr. Bustle later today.
Yeah, I never, I never see the...
I didn't, if I might, through the chair, did the question come from Mr. Bustle, or was it from?
There was one, and it was so long ago now, I'm forgetting what it was.
I thought the basic...
It's in the minutes, so, so I know, I can look it up, but I...
Right. I think that one may have been answered to me. I thought this was mostly to make sure that the minutes, the one set of minutes, which is hopefully, well, it is the only one we'll ever have like that because we have, it's on, it's recorded now, but it just gave you the very basics that you actually need to have, which are super limited in a, this is actually something that the board, when we went to training, we were actually explained, the very limited amount the minutes actually have to reflect. So staff was comfortable with what came to you with the fact that we had a machine that didn't operate, that that covered the basis, and that, that was a good question from Mr. Wygum, and make sure we got it on the record, that those minutes are in accordance with law so that we would be covered.
Okay. All right, anybody else have any miscellaneous?
I move that we adjourn.
Can I have a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.